Hi, good evening. I'm Margaret Fire Robin. I serve on Bristol, Tennessee City Council, currently serving as mayor. And I call to order this city council meeting of May 5th, 2020, and welcome everybody who is here. Tara Music, would you please call the roll for us?
Yeah.
Fire Robin.
Here.
Keane.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Luttrell.
Here.
And Turner.
Here.
Thank you. So I want to welcome everybody. Thanks, everybody who's participating in tonight's meeting in whatever way you're on. Your interest in our city government is greatly appreciated. Be patient with us as we continue our utilization of an electronic platform for tonight's meeting. So appreciate, appreciate your understanding. There's will be times you can speak on matters of city business this evening. I'll note when the public comments are welcome and that the instructions for participating in tonight's meeting is provided on the scrolling message at the bottom of your viewing screen. We begin with invocation and pledge, and I would like Pastor Caroline Hawthorne of Hunt Memorial United Methodist Church and St. Luke's United Methodist Church to lead us tonight in our invocation. And following that invocation, I ask Councilman Vince Turner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So everyone at home, if y'all will join with us, we would welcome you. Pastor Caroline, go ahead.
Okay. Please join me and bow your head in a word of prayer. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and for the assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid this current COVID-19 dilemma and issues of our time, that you would give them a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our people, a desire for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Lord, I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Bristol. It is in your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Vince Turner, and if everybody else at home would like to stand with us, that would be great.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, forgiving and just for all.
Thank you very much. All right. At this point in our meetings, our electronic meetings, we ask our attorney Danielle Smith to go over the statutory authority for conducting our meeting electronically.
Yes, Mayor Fire Robin. Governor Lee in Executive Order Number 16 suspended the provisions of the open meetings necessary to allow governing bodies such as city council to meet electronically when necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans. The necessity for meeting electronically should be decided on by council at each meeting. And so at this point, I think it would be appropriate to whole city council and ensure that each of them agrees that it is necessary in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans that you all meet electronically.
Right. So if everybody nods their head, says yes, we're on.
Yes. I think a roll call vote would be probably most appropriate, Mayor, just to.
At these, I know we've not done that at other times. So that sounds great. So Ms. Music, if you would go ahead, that would be great.
Fire Robin.
Uh, here.
Keane.
Yes, I mean, I'm not paying attention. Yes.
Keane.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
And Turner.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much for that explanation and keeping us on task. Tonight, we have six proclamations, several things with public governmental opportunities to recognize different special weeks. The first one is National Police Week and Peace Offers Memorial Day. And Vice Mayor Malin Luttrell will read that proclamation for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department. Whereas there were 61,995 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2017, resulting in approximately 17,902 injuries. Whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 307 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 135 officers killed in 2019 and 172 officers killed in previous years, but those stories of sacrifice have been lost to history until now. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 32nd Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2020. Whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May the 10th through the 16th, 2020. Whereas, May 15, 2020 is designated as Police Officer Memorals Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be flown at half staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, formally designate May 10 through 16, 2020 as Police Week and May 15, 2020 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And usually at our in-person meetings, we're able to recognize folks who've come forward. So we regret that we don't get to recognize our own police force for, for that. Next, we have Children's Mental Health Awareness Day that I will read, and is designating May 7th, 2020 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Whereas, addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families today is fundamental to the citizens of Bristol, Tennessee. And whereas the need for comprehensive, coordinated mental health services for children, young adults, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility. And whereas, it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward our children's mental health and well-being. And whereas Tennessee Voices, through its unique approach to serving children and adolescents, is effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee does hereby proclaim May 7th, 2020 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in the city of Bristol, and urge all our citizens and all agencies and organizations in, in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite on that day in the observance of such exercises as will acquaint the people of our community with the fundamental necessity of a year-round program for children, youth, and young adults with mental health needs and their families this fifth day of May 2020. And I will just note on for our children's mental health that our schools, who we will hear from Dr. Tudor later, are constantly working on children's mental health as well as working with our families, as well as just wanted to say that Frontier Health is open for business by phone appointments that are then either by phone or online and are there to help folks in this time of need. So just wanted to, to note that. Next, we have Economic Development Week, and Councilman Chad Keane is going to read that proclamation. Thank you.
A proclamation recognizing Economic Development Week. Whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating and retaining and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which in the hallmark of American economy, which is the hallmark of an American economy. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including urban, local, state, and federal governments, public private partnerships, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers assist our existing industries and businesses, which are the cornerstone of our local economy, to continue to thrive and grow. And whereas the Industrial Development Board, who works alongside and in support of the city's economic development team, providing diverse experience and expertise and leadership. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their corner of the world. And whereas the economic development team is valued and has the admiration and appreciation of the work they do in the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And therefore, be resolved that the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee does hereby proclaim May 4th through 9th, 2020 as Economic Development Week, and reminds individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and improving the quality of life. This fifth day of May 2020, Mayor Margaret Fire Robin.
Thank you very much. And I believe that our economic development staff person, Tom Anderson, is on, and I did not prepare him. I don't know that he was prepared. I had it done. But Tom, would you like to just add in a few things for benefit of our own economic development?
Well, yeah. First, I appreciate the recognition for the department. And Matt and I are still working very hard, but prior to everybody going, going home and, you know, being safer at home, we had a fundamentally strong economy going into this. So we'll, we'll come out of it in pretty good shape. A lot of people want to equate this with the Great Depression and things like that. We're, we're not going to have a sustained, oh gosh, not, not performing economy. There's quite a bit of developers that I talk to several times a week. There's a lot of projects that are in the pipeline. So we just need to get through and weather this current storm, and then when it's safe to come back out, we're going to hit the ground running. And I think we're going to see a lot of assets being created in our community and, and hopefully a lot more jobs on the horizon. But thank you.
No, thank you. And I know times past, we've had our Small Business Week that I think is planned later this year. That was fortuitous. Anyway, but also I think, Tom, we've said before that we like your optimistic projection and talking with us. So I think we just need to add you to our agenda every time. So.
Anytime.
I really appreciate, appreciate that very much and appreciate the work that you and Matt and others that support our economic development team do. Next, we have a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. Councilman Vince Turner is going to read that, that one.
Thank you. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those experienced sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-the-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, proclaim May 17th through the 23rd, 2020 as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Strong, Ready Today, Preparing for Tomorrow. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate, appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you very much. And I guess the appropriate activities, we're pretty much into that these days. So with what's, what's happening. So certainly that covers a lot of folks that we need to thank, and particularly during these times, need to thank them. Also, I, I wanted to say at some point, and this sounds like a good time, I have had a couple conversations with people who were unsure of whether 911 was still operating, whether our emergency room was still operating as usual, et cetera. So just want to let folks know that all those services are there and they're good and prepared to help you and prepared with protecting people from the COVID virus. Also, that ballot has begun the elective surgeries back again as well. So just want to be sure that, that folks understand that those things are in place. Next, we have a proclamation for National Public Works Week, and Vice Mayor Luttrell will read that proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the people of Bristol, Tennessee. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees from state and local governments and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, well, the buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Bristol, Tennessee to gain knowledge of, and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee proclaim May 17th through 23rd, 2020 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And at this point, if we were in person, we would have someone come forward. Mr. Sora, do you want to add anything?
Well, certainly after, after years in that field, and Tim Beavers also is on the line, and has, has worked for years in that field. There's a lot of skills that go, that go into delivery of services day in and day out, from, from the, the road maintenance to solid waste collection to water and sewer. Without, without these truly heroes within our community, life as we know it wouldn't exist.
Thank you. And I know public works are an area we're really proud of with snow removal, with the fast response when water lines break, all the different things that we depend on. And we know folks are out there in all kinds of weather and tough, tough situations. So we really, really appreciate very much. Our next proclamation is National Teacher Appreciation Week. So I'll give heads up to Dr. Tudor to be prepared to follow with a comment or two. Councilwoman Lee Powers is going to read this proclamation appropriately as she is a teacher.
Yes, I have been. I was in the Bristol, Tennessee City Schools for several years. And this week of May 4th through the 8th is actually National Teacher Appreciation Week. So all of you at home, be sure to reach out to your teachers and let them know how much you appreciate them, especially as they've gone above and beyond during this particular time of year. Whereas Bristol, Tennessee City Schools teachers are responsible for shaping the minds and hearts of Bristol, Tennessee students in order to ensure that they will all have an equal chance at life through education. And whereas Bristol, Tennessee City Schools teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, creating safe and loving school cultures, building deep partnerships with families and communities, collaborating with colleagues, and reflecting on their craft. And whereas the Bristol, Tennessee City Schools teachers always go above and beyond the call of duty to fill many roles, such as mentors, role models, coaches, and motivators, along with many teachers aides, cafeteria workers, maintenance, and sanitation workers, as well as others to work together throughout the school year to provide the best for our students. Especially during this time of COVID-19, the pandemic, which has increased requirements of teachers and other staff members for online teaching, maintaining relationships with students and families, reaching out with meals and food to avoid food insecurity, so many, including being creative in approaches during challenging times. And whereas Bristol, Tennessee City Schools teachers have engaged with their students with exciting and rigorous teaching and learning at all times, and now more than ever are challenged to do so. Whereas Bristol, Tennessee City Council recognizes and supports each, each of its teachers and school staff members in educating and nurturing the students of Bristol, Tennessee City Schools. Let it now be proclaimed that City Council of Bristol, Tennessee recognizes each and every one of the contributions of our many teachers, administrators, and school staff during this National Teacher Appreciation Week. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council join our Bristol, Tennessee School Board in encouraging all members of our community to join with expressions of appreciation to our teachers and staff for their dedication and commitment to children of Bristol, Tennessee. This is the fifth day of May 2020. And Dr. Tudor, a word to you and all of your faculty, administration, and staff, we do so appreciate everything that you've done. I've seen the bus leave out several mornings. I know that y'all have taken not only food and school supplies, but also clothing to those that have needed it, as well as household materials. Thank you for all that y'all have done on behalf of the people and the students of Bristol, Tennessee.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate that. Our, our folks have worked very hard and very diligently to serve our students, and they continue to do so. But I'd also like to throw in parents to that recognition. They've had to step up and serve in the role of teacher, or tutor, or mentor unexpectedly, certainly, and with little or no training or preparation. And so they've had to adjust on the fly, and we appreciate them for sticking with it and persevering through that challenge. We know it's not been easy to do, but thank you very much for recognizing our teachers and our staff and our administrators. They, they have worked hard and will continue to do so through the end of the school year and certainly into the summer. So we appreciate that very much. And we do have a social media campaign happening on our, on Facebook now. If you have folks that want to reach out and send a message to their teachers, there's ways to do that, or staff members, any of our staff members, there's ways to do that through social media. They can reach out and, and just visit our Facebook page to be able to have those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thanks for adding parents to that. I think with the parents need as many accolades as they can get at this point with it being a long time, and it's, it's tough. And for those who are balancing work at home as well, it makes it all the more difficult. So thank you. Next, we have no presentations on our agenda tonight, no public hearings. So we have our appearance of citizens, and this section allows for the public to address city council, usually on any matter that is not on our agenda. But while we are online, we're going to say this is for any matter not on our agenda or on the agenda this evening. So at this point, we will, well, let me finish saying that. Usually a response is not made since most cases, if it's not an agenda item. Neither council nor city manager are prepared adequately to respond to the concern. The process is for the city manager to look into the matter and report back to city council or have staff meet with person about their concerns to see if they can be satisfied. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual, not transferable to other individuals. Groups are encouraged to choose a spokesperson to represent them. And if you would like to participate in tonight's online meeting during this section, please follow the instructions scrolling at the bottom of your viewing screen. And here for us live, we will wait an appropriate amount of time for, to be sure any calls come in, and then we will be back on again. So if you wish to address council, follow the directions. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. We had no public comments tonight, so we move on to appointments and we don't have any of those this evening. We do have, we did receive one that we will look at in July. Our tradition is to wait till July not to do June appointments and that's particularly important in our election years, which allows any new council persons to participate in those appointments. Ordinances and resolutions, we have no new ordinances and no second, first or second readings. So we have two resolutions. The first one is Resolution twenty dash thirty approving tax equivalent payments by Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services. And we always like to see this on our agenda. Mr. Sora, would you summarize?
Yes, Mayor, Resolution twenty dash thirty does authorize the distribution of tax equivalent payments by Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services to the various political subdivisions in which they have a have a service delivery role. Obviously, the city of Bristol, Virginia is key amongst that, but also Sullivan County, the town of Bluff City and portions of Washington County, Virginia are also also served with municipal power by BTES. The grand total of this distribution is two million four hundred and seventy-six thousand twenty-one dollars and twelve cents. It includes two million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents for electric facilities. And as you can see, this is a lion's share of the BTS business. Also include twenty-one thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-one cents for telecommunications facilities and ninety-five thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-one cents for cable and internet facilities. Each of these payments is calculated on a statutory formula and is used as the maximum amount permitted by law. These payments are made by by our tax exempt utility as compensation for services rendered by the municipality throughout the which hosts their facility throughout the year. As far as what this means to the city of Bristol, Tennessee of the amounts that I've talked about, a total of one million nine hundred and seven thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents will be distributed as a revenue item to the city of Bristol, Tennessee. Payment is due no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Thank you very much. Does any member of council have any questions for Mr. Sora? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty thirty.
Second.
Okay, and Vince Turner, your second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? I think this could be a time that we we have a representative who serves on BTS board and that currently is Councilman Vince Turner. We appreciate your service and the work that you do on that board. So do you have anything to add at this point?
No, so. No, I do not.
That's good, thank you. We know y'all do a lot with taking care of business. I think we're ready to vote. Tara?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Resolution twenty dash thirty-one, a resolution authorizing the finance director to write off uncollectible utility receivables. Mr. Sora, can you summarize?
Yes, Mayor, be glad to. What the resolution does authorize, as you indicated, the write-off of uncollect uncollectible utility debt. By utility debt, I'm referring to to that that the city provides through water and sewers, solid waste and stormwater. This is an annual housekeeping measure. We can, once once debt has been on our books for more than six years, then then we've reached our statutory limitation in terms of collection. All of these services, and there's some four hundred and seventy-three delinquent accounts, all of these services were terminated years ago. And and after exhausting our efforts to collect and we've turned them over to collection agencies and for further collection efforts and and they're they're at the end of their process. Again, this this, the the write-off accounts here are for the period of January the first twenty thirteen through December thirty-first, twenty thirteen. The write-offs do total an amount of eighty thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Again, this is beyond our our statutory ability to collect this and it's been recorded as a bad bad debt expense at the various funds that I mentioned earlier. And it's largely a housekeeping measure to address the issue.
Thank you very much. Does any member of council have questions?
Do we average that amount on an annual basis or is this an especially low or high year?
I think it's probably an average amount, but Tara, do you do you recall?
It's slightly higher than normal. We've seen a trend over the past couple of the years that the amount that we're writing off, it gets a little bit bigger each year, but it's not a huge abnormal abnormality.
Of those accounts are the are the majority, are they residential or is there commercial in here also? Because looking, it's about a hundred and seventy dollars per account. So is there some that's throwing off the average of that? Is there some commercial accounts in there?
There is, there is one commercial account that is bankrupt and and that that accounts for roughly ten grand.
Oh, okay, so that's a large portion. Okay.
The the balance of them are are generally small residential accounts that someone's moved away, you no longer find them, no, or we could rest that time.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty thirty-one.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Great, motion and a second. Is there any further? We had questions, any discussion? If not, I think we're ready to vote. Tara?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we've moved pretty quickly. We are to our consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you read the items on the consent agenda tonight?
Yes, Mayor, as you can see, the consent agenda normally has some purchasing items and and with under the economic challenges that we're under right now, we have least unnecessary purchasing, especially the capital items that were that were still remaining this year. So the balance of our consent agenda is essentially minutes from from meetings held earlier this year. I will go ahead and read those. Minutes of the April seventh, twenty twenty, city council meeting. Minutes of the April ninth, twenty twenty, special call city council meeting. Minutes of the April sixteenth, twenty twenty, special call city council meeting. Minutes of the April twentieth, twenty twenty, city council, special call city council meeting. Minutes of the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, call city council meeting. Minutes of the April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, call city council meeting. Minutes of the April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, city council work session. And the minutes of the April thirtieth, call city council meeting.
Thank you very much. Does anybody on council want to take anything off the agenda? All right, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. And Tara, are you ready to call the roll?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next, we are always grateful to have someone from our schools with us from the Board of Education and Dr. Tudor, we welcome you again this evening. And I think a couple of folks congratulated you on your evaluation of your position. So we welcome you tonight and look forward to your update.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Thank you again for recognizing our teachers and staff for National Teacher Appreciation Week. As you mentioned earlier, it it's been a an interesting transition trying to teach students remotely from home and trying to encourage and lift up parents to assume that role. And so it's it's been an interesting journey for sure, but they have all worked diligently to either instruct or provide food or services to our families, which we'll continue to diligently focus on for the rest of the school year and even into the summer. I'd also like to thank the some of the businesses that are located on State Street. We've recognized recently that they are posting banners of some of our senior athletes in their windows. I know that we've got a couple of sports that are up already. So we appreciate the community support, certainly for those students. It's difficult for a senior to go through ending their high school career this way. And so the show of community support is definitely appreciated and we hope that at some point we'll be able to to pay them back for that when things get back to some sort of normalcy in our city. But thank you very much for those community businesses who are supporting our students. We appreciate that. We are in our last three weeks of school technically, so our last day of school is technically May twenty-second. So you'll may hear in on social media or from families that over the course of the next two weeks, next week and the following week, we're going to be communicating with families for opportunities for students to come to school and drop off things that they have and pick up personal belongings and sort of tie up the loose ends of the typical school year. We'll hear communication about that. I'm excited, if you haven't heard, we I'm excited to say that we have tentatively announced a date for graduation, which is July twenty-fourth. Our seniors completed a couple of surveys and overwhelmingly requested that we delay graduations with the hopes that we can have an in-person ceremony. And so that's our hope is that maybe by July twenty-fourth, we can be back to normal enough that we can have a traditional ceremony in person. It unfortunately, we won't be able to catch all students at that point. We do know that we have several students who will not be able to participate at that time for a variety of reasons, some of whom are committed to military academies and won't be able to come back at that time. And so we're doing a virtual type ceremony with them now where we can videotape and they have an opportunity to be with their families in the next few weeks. And then we'll add that into our traditional ceremony in July, so they'll still be a part of that. I'd like to also thank the city for their help and support in helping us plan a prom. We tentatively scheduled that for July twenty-second, just a couple of days before graduation. Of course, all of this is contingent upon the health department's guidance and making sure that we're back and safe and able to hold these events, but we're hoping to be able to hold prom downtown. So an opportunity for us to show appreciation to our community and and for our community to embrace our students. Hopefully that will happen on July twenty-second and we appreciate the support from the city in helping us prepare for that if that's going to be a possibility. Just also want to let you know that we will continue feeding programs for our families through the summer. We actually had thought at one point that we would drop that back to our normal services. We always provide meals in the summer to students who would come and pick them up and eat on our campuses or who were in summer school programming. We're not doing traditional summer school programming, all of that's online, but we've found that there is such a demand. So far, we've seen no decrease in numbers of families coming to pick up breakfast and lunch daily and weekly. Our numbers are not declining and probably increasing slightly. Therefore, we're going to continue those services. We won't be able to continue deliveries. We we deliver to about sixty families now. We won't be able to continue that and we'll drop off a couple of bus runs. But for the most part, everything else will remain the same in terms of providing those meals for families, hopefully well into July, definitely through the end of June, but well into July as well. So we've recognized that that's a need, same with our Family Resource Center supports. They'll continue to support families as the summer goes on if should they need family support for meals or access to resources that they can't otherwise access. So we're hoping to continue all those services and provide remote learning opportunities for summer school for our most at-risk, those students that are behind on credits for graduation or who need intervention in preparation for next year. And our hope is that we can be opening school under normal circumstances in August and then have plans for certainly trying to make up for this lost instructional time these past nine weeks. So that's all I have for you all. Do you have any questions for me?
I'll just ask for a clarification that so the what the the meals that you've done or the extra food that you've done at some point will will not be continued, but the Family Resource Center will be available to help people access, find find their way if they need help accessing more food. Is that?
No, actually, we we will continue the meal services as we've provided them. In years past, we have not done that in a summer program, but we will this summer. We are not, we're we're with the exception of just changing a couple of dropping a couple of buses and deliveries, everything else will remain the same.
Okay, I thought that the delivery to sixty families would would change when school ends.
That will change, but everything else in terms of having multiple feeding sites and families allowed to come and pick those up. Traditionally, in a under normal regulations, we would provide lunch for students who were on campus for summer school, which basically essentially happened only at Vance or Tennessee High. And then families could come and students could eat on campus during typical like eleven to one, that kind of timeframe. This summer, we'll have expanded locations. We'll still, for instance, take buses to a couple of those locations where we have concentrations of students in housing complexes and that sort of thing, apartment complexes. Those will continue as well as a couple of kitchens will be open and have multiple locations where we'll have the opportunities for families to come and pick up. They the regulation for them to eat on campus has been lifted by the federal government so they can come and pick up meals, breakfast and lunch all through the summer. We won't do weekend meals. That will also stop, but everything else will remain the same, which is a greater number of meals served than we typically serve in any other summer. We've just recognized that that's a need for our our community. So sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
You were clear.
It is very different.
You were clear. It was the delivery to the sixty families I was clarifying. So that was great. And I know the concern for our children continues and for families and helping with support and that I know y'all, the school system's very familiar with community resources to help folks access those as well. So appreciate that a whole lot. Anybody else? Thank you very much for joining us and taking your time and being here. Next, we have our city managers report. Mr. Sora, what do you want to fill us in on?
Like to to make council aware of of dates of activities during the month of May. Following the the conversation during our work session last Thursday, I've added two work session dates. One will be Tuesday, May twelfth at nine AM. The second will be Tuesday, May nineteenth at nine AM. And then, of course, we'll have our our regular annual budget work session on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth. We will, we will move that also to nine AM, I think, from our traditional starting time of ten thirty. The I think we've got, we've got a lot to talk about during that budget work session. But moving back to the twelfth, I think there was interest in having discussion on the International Building Code and the Energy Code that's currently adopted by the city. So I do want to spend some time with presentation with that and then get direction on city council as to as to where they would like to get move forward with that. Also, there's been previously, and I don't know that it was mentioned last with Thursday or not, but the potential use of utility tap fees for incentive for residential development. We can review the statutory ability to do that. And then other And then other potential residential incentives, the, we've asked Joel Conkin, who is an attorney representing the Housing Authority. And there was interest mentioned last Thursday regarding potential housing improvements or residential improvements in the area south of West State Street. Some of this area is in redevelopment districts. So I think it would be, it would be appropriate to hear some of the tools that the Housing Authority has in their box to deal with, with residential housing in some of those areas. So he'll be there to do that on May 19th. And if there are other items that council would like to see addressed during these work sessions, we can do so. Just let me know. But the, as we discussed, our housing study that was done, I think in 2016, now 2017, and presented, we talked about updating that. We can still do that. And that's, that is exactly what's that is working with now. They met with NUTR this afternoon, garnering additional or updated information to put into that report. If that report needs to be broadened, we can do that. We probably can't do that within that timeframe. But, but we can update that study and present that during, during, on Tuesday, May 19th. In addition, I'd like for Scott Gibson to be on the call at that time, our financial advisor. And that we do have an opportunity for refunding of our Series 2013 A bonds. This was the lighter or the smaller of the trumps of funds that went into the stimulus for, for the, the pinnacle. And there is a refunding opportunity there then, and he can share that with you. But it could net out to potentially a million dollars over the, over the remaining life of the amortization or the remaining life of that, of that debt. So, and then also, if you remember last month, in April, Tom Anderson was on board to talk about the Economic Development Center policy. There was some desire to, to, to review that policy, I think on your own again, if you had questions to bring those back. I'd like to bring Tom back also on the 19th to give you an opportunity for any questions, any changes you'd like to make. And if, if the polit, if policy is satisfactory to council at that point, then I'd like to place it on the June agenda for formal consideration. That's all.
All right. All right. Anybody have any questions on our dates coming up?
With, have you, have you heard anything from the Health Department as to whether or not we could expect if our numbers hold to go into phase two as of Monday?
No, Councilwoman Powers, I have not. I suspect we'll have a, our, our weekly call Friday morning. The only commu, I haven't had any communications with them since last Friday morning and they weren't prepared to go there at that time.
Okay. Because my only question is with so much information on the 19th, if we are in phase two, would it be possible for us to actually meet at the annex for that meeting?
If we're in phase two, I think we could do that. You know, we can, anytime we can stay below 10 because the, the meeting on the 26th, I really need for that meeting to be in a, where, where, if, if you recall, we have multiple screens. It's a little harder to do a presentation like that in the Zoom type of format, but, but as we move forward, we can certainly, we can certainly evaluate those. We can always limit the number of people there. The only, the only issue might be if we, if we had members of the public that desired to participate in any of those discussions, then we would need to create an opportunity for that. And we've thought through how, how we can possibly do that during our annual budget work session. But, but we can, we can certainly explore the, the 19th and we'll, we'll, we'll have more information on that for you on the 12th.
Well, my only thought was that with the bulk of the agenda, and I think it's something that, you know, we're all very interested in. I just, I think that that's one of those things that if we can meet in person, it would be advantageous so that we, you know, the Zoom is great, but at times it's very limiting and it's hard to really grasp all of the information and everyone else's nuances. So if we could, I would appreciate that.
We could also look at, rather than meeting in the annex, we could meet at, at perhaps the Nature Center as we will on the 26th. That's a larger footprint and gives us a, a better opportunity to spread out within the room. But depending on the guidelines of where we are, we, we probably want to stay in, within the 10. But we'll, we'll, we'll certainly look at that.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, I would say if we haven't heard from, if nothing really has changed much, even though that's a full agenda on the 19th, it could be good to get an update from our Health Department on the 19th, take 10 or 15 minutes to have them talk about where we are at that point.
They, they've, they've always been very agreeable.
Right.
To make this in and update council.
All right. City Council comments?
All right, I'll kick it off.
Thank you, Chad.
Yeah, I will say this, that we have had many meetings and may have got more done in the last month with me. So I want to say I really appreciate, you know, our staff from, for hanging in there with us. And, you know, one of the things that I really miss this, this time of the year is, is our race fans. We've missed the April race. Coming up in June 5th, I don't think there's going to be any race fans there. And we've, we're looking to the, where, if we were able to run the drag race later on this year. So I want to say Bristol Motor Speedway does a great job and everything that they do. But one of the things I wanted to mention also, I have multiple things I want to mention, but, you know, we, we're Teacher Appreciation Week. We talked about parents being very prevalent in, in the teachings right now. You know, really, we really have a lot of folks that work with our children. Bristol Promise, Margaret, you're heavily involved, Bristol Promise, you know, the YMCA, YWCA, Department of Children's Services, you know, throughout the county and city and state level. We have so many folks that works. I really appreciate all that they do within those realms. Wanted also mention too, we were, we were recognizing Economic Development Week and Tom Anderson did a good job of talking a little bit about that. But we also have April Eats from Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services that does a huge load for us, that whole realm of things. Clay Walker from Networks also really does a lot of work throughout Sullivan County. You know, we've, we've heard of some businesses that are closing. And this was kind of the catalyst that has, has, you know, brought them to that closing level. So we have our work cut out for us, all of us, to help spur, you know, a startup, startups and businesses that are coming within the future. Also wanted to mention also too, we've had, we had several great proclamations. One was Teachers Week and everything in education. But, you know, we've got some frontline folks that are working very hard within the city. And I'll, you know, Parks and Rec along with our Public Works Department folks. And I'm probably going to miss quite a few folks here that I shouldn't mention. But those folks are on the front lines. They can't take off work. We have got to have them on, on their feet and working to take care of our city services on a, on a daily basis. Our police, fire and EMS, they are in the line. I mean, they're, they're in the line of fire right now. We've got to make sure that we remember those folks. Give them a thank you when you see them, if you are out in the community, because they are, they are the ones that are really checking on folks that, that may have health problems and that kind of thing. And so it's, and they have families that they have to be responsible for as well. Last thing I wanted to mention also too was, you know, our department heads have, especially in eight and human resources have challenging times right now. A lot of folks, well, I'm just going to say, our department heads and Bill in particular, Bill, appreciate all the work that you do. It has been a very trying last couple of months. And appreciate your updates for the council, for our community and, and keeping us, you know, and also continuing to keep our business flowing. Mentioned a little while ago that we've had many, many meetings, may have got more done business-wise in the last month than we've done in, you know, a long time and several months. So it's hard to pack all the stuff that we have done into one work session, but the Bill and our staff has, has really, you know, really made sure that business continues within the city. And I think we all as council members need to think about, and myself in particular, need to think about as we are in times as we are right now is, is in our training, we know that all of our staff members, our, our manager, as well as all department heads and others within the city, they have day-to-day business they have to take care of and make sure they take care of. So we add to their list. We are, we are adding things that they have to do beyond, beyond what their normal day-to-day activities are. So I guess my thought was, is in our, you know, not long ago, we were training about not overwhelming our staff. So I really appreciate the fact that our staff has stepped up in so many different ways and so quickly in so many different ways that it's a real attribute to what they have done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And we all add, chime in to that. Thank you, Chad. So others?
Well, to add on to what Chad is saying, you know, a big agreement here. I think staff knows how much we appreciate them and all of the work and efforts that they do to keep us moving forward. A few things in regard to the May 19th meeting that we had talked about some in the past is that, you know, the capabilities of the IDB in regard to land acquisition and what would be involved in, I know that it's not something that we would fund out of the general fund, but could be a way to monetize the fund such as a land acquisition fund. I had a local business owner ask, you know, they were aware that this had been done in other areas. And so just something to think about there. And for clarification, I think it's only fair to, to make it known that Danielle did send a tremendous email to the state. I've gone back and looked at it in depth and it, it addresses, it addressed many things that we had asked for. It went into the conversation of incentives and relate, as related to tier counties three, level three and level four. We are a tier level two. And, you know, reached out and the state is going to take a look at that. I don't know if y'all have heard back specifically yet. Bill, have y'all heard anything back yet from that?
I think Danielle had some conversation today. I'll let her speak to that.
Okay, Danielle?
Just confirmation that they're looking at it and they'll get back to us as quickly as they can.
Okay. And I just wanted to say, you know, it was a, it was a great email. It laid it all out very succinctly. I think that there was a problem with some firewalls and so glad that they have the email now and hopefully that will give us some direction. If we could, you know, Tuesday, May 12th will be, if our numbers hold, then the phases would be addressed on Monday, whether or not we go into or are considering going into phase two. So the 19th is fine, but if they want to come on and, and speak on the 12th, that might be helpful to give some direction in case we are going into phase two, because things change quite a bit as we all know going into phase two in regard to the COVID.
Let me, let me ask then, would you like, would you, would you like for representatives on Department of Health to be, what to, to maybe open up on both the 12th and the 19th?
I think that would be nice. And then, let's see, where am I? I lost my thought here. The Health Department update. Oh, I know what it is. In the past, we have spent a lot of time and a good bit of money on a variety of studies. And, and Bill, don't get excited. I'm not asking us to spend any money. But I do think that it's important with all the studies that we've done, and of course, not, not May 12th or May 19th. But I think it's really important that we, especially in regard to like community parks and rec studies, you know, we've done the aquatic study, we've done the trail study, we've done the farmer's market study, just off the top of my head. I think we did the studies because we wanted to develop the scope of work specific to the improvement of those community assets. So if we could at some point bring those studies back to light and to prioritize those studies based on assessments in the community. You know, which of those are we still interested in pursuing? I mean, because there was a lot of work put into those studies. And, you know, what, what are, what's our priority there? And, and what's reasonable? What is far-fetched? I know given our current economic position, it's not going to happen tomorrow. But to piggyback on what Tom said, I think it's very important that while we do have some businesses closing, which is tragic and unfortunate for those business owners and for those employees of those businesses, we will come back. This is not the end. We had a vibrant economy going into this. And it may be that we have to walk in place for a little bit to be able to start moving forward. We can use this time to get our, our scope of work in place and to have these conversations as Chad said, as I think we all recognize. Realizing that it's not going to happen today, but we'll have it all in place so that when the floodgates do begin to open back up, we have already laid the initial groundwork to make some of these things happen. And again, I will reiterate what Chad said in regard to staff and the city staff and our educational staff. It's been, it's been a tough season right now and we're not out of it yet. We've still got a few more miles to go. And just appreciate everything that everybody's doing. Thank you.
I'll dodo that on the staff. And, you know, I think it's, it was good this past weekend and spoke to one downtown business that, you know, I think over the weekend, probably did more business over the weekend than they did the entire last month. So that's good to see and people getting out. I know there were some of the restaurants open. There were folks out and having dinner and that's good to see. And I actually, I haven't worn it yet, but you talked to Margaret about masks and thanks to my good friend, William King, he delivered this to me on Sunday. So now I have a mask. But, you know, I think it's good that we're getting back. It has been a long 30, 45 days, but like I said, I appreciate staff, Bill, the updates that we get every day. And things are looking up. We'll, we'll be good. So that's all I have.
Okay. May one?
Yeah, I'm going to dodo what Chad said. It's very, very eloquent, Chad, where you put everything and I wholly support you. Yesterday I was taking some time. I took a trip down to Steels Creek and done some walking and I had my mask on as well. Did some walking and just reflecting on just, you know, what, what we have here in our, in our community. You know, we have a beautiful park and just, just a lot of beauty in general. You know, one thing I'd just like to, to leave with is that as we continue going, you know, through this unusual times, you know, we just need to remember how important it is for us all to be considerate of each other. And, you know, as a community, you know, we've all got a lot of work to do. We're all going to have to roll our sleeves back up to get this economic engine running again on all eight cylinders. You know, we've been kind of putting along on two and three, but, you know, we need to get back on eight. And I think this staff, this community, we can do this. And just so proud, you know, to be a part of this great team at Bristol, Tennessee. It's just, it's just amazing, you know, what our staff can do when challenged and what they can do just on a regular basis. So really, really proud of it. And one last thing, I, I had put a post out there on my social media a couple of days ago, but I don't know if anybody's seen it, but I thought it was very fitting during this time. It's something that Henry Ford said one time, coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is progress and working together is success. And we've got the team that's going to succeed. Thank you.
Thanks very much for all those words. And I've got And, uh, I've got several things. One, I'll pick up on the comments, Malon's yours on the parks. And for those folks who are on social media and perhaps follow Paul Conco, who's been on Bristol, Virginia Economic Development Board, was past president of Virginia Highlands, um, and is a huge Bristol enthusiast at all kinds of events downtown since he's retired. But he took on a project of going to all our city parks. And I think Terry Napier can correct, I think it's 32 different ones. He achieved all of those. Um, and he now is doing Bristol, Virginia parks. But pretty interesting way to try to, um, cross off those days by visiting our, all our different parks. So, um, I, I found that pretty interesting to follow. So we are fortunate with being, having a metro health department to, um, be able to participate with the other six, um, uh, large areas, um, on the, to hear from the governor's task force that is working with the 89 counties, and offer our input as well as to get a little bit of heads up on the work that they're doing. Um, and they're going to take a breather when they're almost done with rel- re- um, releasing guidelines that go with the Tennessee pledge. And the guidelines, they have worked very, very hard with folks across the state and from the different, um, uh, different businesses and entities and working with the Health Department to provide those guidelines on reopening. This last Friday, they did the Houses of Worship. They've done the restaurant, retail, gyms, uh, personal care. They also are coming out, I, if not today, it's tomorrow on manufacturing, construction, agriculture, uh, and accommodations, even though those didn't ever close. Offering the, their best wisdom with the group that they have and the Health Department. They will then be taking, um, taking a look at phase two and coming out with some of the guidelines and help with safely opening for phase two. So, so there'll, there'll be more information coming from that direction. Also, hopefully, I hope to see more information out on the Tennessee pledge on, um, for information on how to follow that, how to publicize that for us as Tennesseans to be really proud of doing what we can to work together to support each other, um, as we open up so we keep everybody healthy. Um, and I'll just comment to say that the virus hasn't gone away. We get those warnings from our, uh, medical community, our health community, our public health community, that it's together with each of us taking individual actions of continuing that social distancing all the time when we're out shopping, standing in line, um, going to a restaurant, uh, realizing spacing, et cetera. We're dependent on our businesses to follow their guidelines. Uh, and all those guidelines right now include folks wearing masks when they're, um, around other people. Also continuing the washing hands, sanitizing those kinds of things. We, we really, really, really want to be successful in opening back up and to open back up and to not have, uh, surge again, an outbreak of higher levels of the virus. We really have to work hard, work together to make that happen. And just a reminder also that, uh, we're still learning about the coronavirus. It's, um, like no other virus that, um, we, our medical community has seen before. Highly contagious, uh, range of illness from asymptomatic to serious. And just to say it again in another way, it's important to continue acting as if you have the virus and don't want to spread it. Continuing to act like the people around you have the virus and you don't want to get it. Also, I'll remind, um, as we open up, the overall recommendation is for older people, people age 60 plus, people in institutional nursing facilities, detention centers, people with high risk factors, people who are at more risk are supposed to continue, um, with the reduction of being out in the public and be safer at home. So just want to remind folks of that. Thanks to, um, everyone with hopeful messages. And I certainly join that as well as join with the appreciation during this very stressful time that again, we're, we're still going to be in it for quite some time. Hopefully we'll have opportunity to take some breathers and do some celebrating. But appreciate everyone, appreciate our school system, um, trying to celebrate our seniors and help all our students and families. So with that, uh, unless anybody has anything else to add, we'll conclude and I'll adjourn this meeting. And we'll be back to a formal meeting on June 2nd. And that'll be in person, we hope, with different, uh, called meetings in between. So anybody else? All right, we're adjourned.